On Tuesday, September 8th, this is the regular meeting of the town and the Cannon Board of Selectment. Good morning, Nick and Kathleen. I would say Kit.
Okay.
And.
Morning, Rob.
Before we start, we have an item to add to the agenda. For me. A contract extension on the road pavement program to include two roads, which we have a memo on our tablets or sent to us over the weekend by email. Excuse me, I'm gonna get a bottle of water. So I would first move, we amend the agenda to add this new item. Second.
Second.
Nick, second. All in favor? I. Okay, with that, we, first of all, I'd mentioned, well, first item on the agenda is the minutes from our last meeting on August 18th. Any comments, corrections?
This one. Last paragraph, I just, Lynn Brooks, Abney, it's just to typo in her name, last paragraph, first page.
Got that, Tom? Okay, thank you. With that, I move, we approve the minutes of the August 18th meeting. Have a second?
Second.
All favor? Okay, public comments, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectment on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments should be submitted to the following email address, b o s distribution at the Canada C D dot gov. We will take comments throughout the meeting by email sent to that email address, b o s distribution at the Canada C T dot gov and Kathleen and Nick, I would ask you to check our, who sees that B O S distribution?
The three, the three of you and I do.
And you do, okay. So if we see any comments, we will take a moment before the end of the meeting to read comments from the public. With that, and by the way, the D P W item on the roads, we can add, Tiger is with us and really don't have any other P P W items on the agenda. Tiger, do you plan to stay with us?
I'll stay the entire time, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So take it up toward the end of the meeting. Probationary status, Cheryl, morning. Are you gonna do the two H R items?
She's unmuted.
Cheryl?
She's frozen.
We don't have audio. Can you hear us?
Hey Kevin, at what point are we gonna go back to having? Hey Cheryl, come in here. We're just gonna. These meetings are getting tiresome.
You wanna join me here? Join Tom?
Okay.
Sorry, technical problems this morning. Nick, we can discuss that.
Yeah, I think we should. There's only three of us. It's not like.
To present Josh Kaufman, he is a financial analyst. He's been with us for six months. We would like to bring him off probation. Linda is here so he can jump in, but Josh has been a team player. He's got a great personality. He's thorough and he is a great addition to our finance department. Linda, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd like to echo what you said. He's a great addition. He's working on our fixed assets and as we've had discussions, as we're transitioning the town administrative officer role, he's going to be taking on some tasks as well related to risk management. He has that background and I think he'd be, he'd be great. He fits in well, has a great personality. He's worked in the financial sector before coming to us and then he's just a great team player. And so we're excited that he's completed his probation status and we're excited that he wants to stay.
Any questions for Linda or Cheryl?
None of your.
I therefore, we approve the request from the Director of Human Resources to remove Josh Kaufman, a financial analyst in the finance department from probationary status. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Employee transfer, Cheryl.
Okay, we opening in the transfer station. So we posted it internally. We had one applicant, Eric Cody, who has been with us for seven years and we would like to promote him from transfer station operator to equipment operator three. Tiger is on, we did interview him and I think he will do very well in this position.
Right, he's filled in the position at times when the, when the previous operator was on vacation or sick, so he had already filled into the position previously and done a good job.
Tiger, you have to, or I don't know if Tiger's on, but do you have to replace his current role with some?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will. We'll, at this point then, we'll post internally for his position and then if no one wants to make a lateral transfer, then we'll, we'll go out on the street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, for the questions, I move, we approve the request from the Human Resources Department to transfer Eric Pote. Is it Pote or Pote?
Cody.
From transfer station operator to equipment operator three. Have a second?
Second.
Kathleen, second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Holidays, there's a, on our tablets is a list of holidays for 2021. Any questions about the holidays? I said none. I move.
None here.
I move, we approve the holiday schedule that has posted on our tablets for 2021. Second?
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Emergency management resolution. Tom, would you, would you like to present this?
I'm sorry.
Would you, would you present what this emergency management resolution is?
Okay, this, this is something we do every year. It used to be, had to be approved by the town council, but it changed a couple of years ago. Last November 19th, it came before the Board of Selectmen was approved at that time and I want to say it's, it's a, it's a normal thing that we have to do to keep, keep all these agreements going between and among the various towns.
I couldn't tell you which agreements I've, I've signed here, but anyway, Tom tells us this is necessary. Any questions for Tom?
None here.
So, Tom, just, I sent an earlier question to you about, about this particular resolution and I, I saw the, the follow-up documentation, which looks like it's pretty much boilerplate that we have to accept. This is, I guess, from Homeland Security. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there, there's no modifications. So I guess it was just, I wanted just to understand whether or not, and I, I guess we do this every year. My question was simply, is there, does anything that does get signed by the First Electment in terms of emergency services and public protection, is that reviewed, if not before, then after those, those emergency powers are undertaken?
And I think we, maybe, I see Jack Hennessy's on. Jack's been through this a few times and his name's on the document. Perhaps he could add a little bit of color to it, too.
There really aren't that many documents that come to the town to be signed. It's generally for maintenance and accepting equipment that has been bought by Homeland Security by the state and there are some requirements and there are also some performance standards when it comes to if there should be any grants or any kind of paperwork like that has to be involved, that the First Electment or the mayor of the municipality needs to sign.
Okay, and I just noted the, again, the documents that were supplied, that I guess we have an obligation to maintain some equipment, I believe, or assets?
That's, that's correct. The state has bought a number of assets for the town that we're responsible for. We're responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep. And if one of the neighboring jurisdictions should want to borrow the equipment, if we're not using it, it's our obligation to let them borrow it.
What kind of equipment is that like?
We have trailers, we have electronic message signs, we have some portable lighting equipment, a couple of other items.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
No further questions?
Kevin, this is really pursuant to our collaborative arrangement we have on emergency preparedness with all the neighboring towns and cities.
Right.
And I'm the Westcoy delegate to the Region One Emergency Preparedness Group and many, many of the towns and cities have equipment that is stationed, distributed so that it can be brought to bear if there's an emergency in another part of the, of the, of the region. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Therefore, I move, we approve the resolutions as set forth on our tablets regarding emergency management cooperation.
I'll move it. For a second, excuse me. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. That brings us to Jim Rogers and the sewer system pump.
Good morning. We're asking to replace one of six submersible pumps at our pump stations. It's an annual replacement. We rotate the pumps and normally once every six, every six years, we have to replace them normally. It's a new vendor, Atlantic Fluid Technology. They're the New England rep, rep and they're the only one that bid on it because of the rep, people had a purchase through them and there's no, no other bids. Other than that, the money is appropriated in the budget.
This is the sewer budget?
Correct.
Okay, questions?
Just want to thank Jim. He, I sent a question to him, a couple of questions, and he responded over the weekend. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We approve the request from the Department of Works to purchase a K S P submersible pump for Atlantic Fluid Technology for $10,178. Second?
Second, second here.
And further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? So two weeks, three weeks ago, actually, our August 18th meeting, there was, there was an error in the proposed platform tennis fees and so just to correct, correctly adopt the platform tennis fees for 2020, we're approving the schedule that's on our tablets for the 2020 platform tennis fees. I think the items with respect to, we don't have non-resident memberships at.
I think it was non, non-resident families. I don't see he's on, but that's what it was.
Okay, so we're really redoing what we did three weeks ago with a corrected schedule.
I'm confused. So there's a, there's not a non-resident family pass, but can you play as a non-resident and buy an adult pass?
I don't see Steve on here.
I don't see Stephen. I don't, I don't see non-resident on the list at all.
No, but it says adult pass. That could be a resident or a non-resident.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, it's not clear as to whether non-residents are permitted to buy passes other than a resident family pass.
I think unlike the pool, I think all our facilities are limited to residents.
Generally, that's the case. Well, not necessarily, well, yeah, I think that's the case.
And this year, we didn't have non-residents for the.
Right. Well, maybe we didn't, sorry.
No, no, excuse me. The, the August 20th email from Steve Banco said, we do not sell non-residential paddle tennis permits.
Right. So with that, I move, we have approved this corrected schedule for the 2020 platform tennis fees. Have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next, nine, we have appointments to the Health and Human Services Commission. The D T C has put forth candidates and we are recommending Alyssa McKenzie and Jen Hadlick, and I think you have their bios on the tablets. And Kathleen, you probably know these.
I know, I know both. I know Alyssa very well. I don't know Jen, other than what you see from her bio, but both are quite capable and I think they'd be great additions to Health and Human Services.
Further questions, Nick?
No, obviously, H H S is is important. A body, you know, that we have in town, given everything that's going on in the last six, eight months, so kudos to, to each of these individuals for stepping up to a, a job that's become, you know, more expansive, more difficult than it's ever been in the past.
Okay, so I move, we approve the appointment of Alyssa McKenzie to a term ending December 1, 2020 and Jen Hadlick for a term ending December 1, 2021 to the Health and Human Services Commission. Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Next on the agenda is the appointed two minutes for the Office of Emergency Management. Chief Tennessee is on the call here for his leadership to see early June, especially through trouble storm. He's, I'm looking at the last time I can say the word. I really appreciate it and the town appreciated your service and your, your, your ass form. It was quite right for a week and I really appreciate it and the town appreciated your service and your, your last form was quite right for a week and I've been earlier, we've been Murphy, um, he's a, he works mostly at your bank and he's a, he was a veteran who was deployed in 2003. Russ, um, and I may see, and as his partner, Phil Shively was just a downed captain of the emergency service, um, since 2015, um, he had a career. The, the salt business was entered for years. He's retired, but works in the capital and also is a, a share of the university, both a gentleman and outstanding volunteers for the town and, and they're capable, teammates with emergency management office and I'm very excited for this. Fully is unable to, thanks for the work ahead. That's both of us. Russ, I appreciate you stepping up and honestly supporting us. Kathleen, any next questions or comments?
Well, I, thank you.
You mentioned team. I mean, that's what the EOC is about, right? It's, it's, um, here's people. A lot of the folks that helped out, to avoid through the storm and the storms before COVID. You know, it's not just one individual. It's, it's everybody, including some of them, and I think it has to shut off this, this whole deal. I told this, this is a friend of mine, took a lot of time with him. Despite that, I'm still in favor. He's not major. We can get better, you know, than us. I've always seen you be perfect for this role. You mentioned he's a Marine, he's a veteran. I mean, he's worked on Wall Street, he's been in the game forever. He also volunteers at Watkins Glen every weekend, although not recently because COVID, but he goes up, shuts up to, to Watkins Glen and volunteers. He's a firefighter and I see you can correct me, but I think you're a senior, again, kind of racetrack safety official and, and I, look, I think you're better than us. You're a terrific guy. Phil, he's great too. My gosh, such a great job. In fact, um, this, this team is better and, uh, I think we're all set for 2021, that helps as that comes.
And I would say that not only the Russian job, he leads our multi-flyer, he leads our local E W, um, he's got a lot of, he does a terrific job and I'm very enthusiastic for Russ stepping up and appreciate that he's doing this. And I feel he's a friend and partner to Russ and I think together we're going to be in good hands with our leadership, what we have as a terrific, terrific team, um, including doctors, medical doctors, those are terrific, sir. Leader, George Albinian, and so with that, I nominate Russ, kind of as a director, and Phil Shively as deputy director. And I look for a second.
Oh, thanks again.
All day. Thank you, Russ. And so we said, thank you, Dave as well. Now, I'll turn to the extension, our P P program. I think he's able to do these two roads.
Thank you. Um, Maria's on as well. She's a member. We'll walk you up before. This is one of the five, I call the big five for Fieldcrest Village, Rainbow Road, Marmar and Lockwood. We're five roads that we weren't able to do in our normal paving program and then we have postponed their paving for, ever come in, into their work. And then now these two are completed. It was a movement by the president's actually, while the petition, do an entire search and survey of everyone on the streets, make sure that everyone's hooked up, that wanted to, were a little bit ahead of the title, but they are very much bigger things were done, especially considering the fact it was torn up for gas lines. And then Corrian came in since it was already torn up and put in an entirely warming service there. So it is arguably our worst road town, our worst road town to complete the work this year. We want to run the here. Can't hear.
But now she's on.
Yeah. I can run through what the analysis was. What, uh, we asked FGB to extend their contract. They're holding their numbers from the difficulty that they had earlier incident. They've actually reduced their sidewalk number since the amount of sidewalk installation here will be greater than what was the original scope for, uh, the areas of Cherry, Cross and V D. In the original contract, we had Cherry, Cherry Street, Cross and V D on the list, and then speaking to EverSource, we wanted to leave that option for them to pass down to those areas. So we actually removed those three streets from, from the contract. We're told, told them to, uh, not to mill and pave those roads. So adding Fieldcrest Village to quantities, while they're a little bit more on Fieldcrest Village, they're very similar. So the pricing is, uh, would be pulled as well. FGB's excellent. First, they just completed the Waymany Road. I think our goal there was to make it look like, um, should we spend our people questions? I've been there previously and been so obviously, I think we accomplished that in no small part to, um, to their efforts. They did a fantastic job on our timeframe, uh, on our schedule. And we'd like to extend the contract with, uh, with FGB, leave the the total number 758,051,083 cents at the 659,100,000, one hundred and seventy, decent contract with a 15% intensity of 98,086,333, where those have 580,183, the money is available in our current, our pavement management improvement program. And we, uh, we and the residents of Fieldcrest and Village are very much excited to, uh, to get this project underway and completed before the end of the year.
Tiger, two questions.
Sure.
That I have one. Is this going to be entirely by EverSource?
Unfortunately, our MOU, um, these roads, since we hadn't done any work on them, uh, was not, so these are these two on our MOU, any road that had been, uh, obviously, EverSource would, um, come back. Either it had been paved, if it had been, like, overlaid, if it was over on it, people had not had any work on them. We did not ask for any monies for that. That was in the original, in our MOU. So, no.
The idea of roads having been done thirty years or so?
Probably longer than that. Our, our program is, is eighteen years old and it hadn't been done at that time and, uh, had been done since 1987, so probably forty years or more.
So that's why these roads are on us.
That's correct. They, we couldn't ask them to pave roads that we hadn't paved ourselves.
The other, the other point is not a question, but a comment that, I don't think we're naming the way we wrote Tiger Trail.
No, I thought it was Lutz Lane or Billy Hill or
I think Tiger Trail could have certain ring to it. Thank you. Questions, Kathleen or Nick for Tiger and?
Hey Tiger, what's, what's our PCI right now?
Our PCI is hovering around an eighty-four.
Which is pretty good considering what we've been through.
Considering what we've been through, yeah, if you, if you get outside of town, our PCI is excellent. Uh, it's just the in-road towns that, the twenty miles or so that have been affected. And, uh, the, the major arterials were just completed. So 106, they paved. So now that is, that's much nicer as well. And we're, uh, we're looking towards trying to do exactly what we did here on Fieldcrest Village and try to accelerate some of the areas that are will no longer be affected by EverSource gas and bring those to the forefront, have those paved, uh, sooner rather than later, instead of waiting for the, for the three-year moratorium to have them done earlier. As long as everyone's, uh, who wants to hook up has hooked up or has the, has the ability to.
We'd also mention that Tiger and I have a meeting scheduled for Thursday with EverSource Gas to review their status of their three-year program, which they're finishing up. They, they're doing a lot of the residential hookups that they promised for last year, let alone this year, and, um, but also to talk about their further expansion possibilities going into 2021 downtown. So hopefully we'll have some good news working with that EverSource gas. So with that, I would move, we approved this contract to extend the contract with FGB Construction to cover the Fieldcrest and Villas Drive and, uh, roads, as Tiger explained, for a total, including a contingency of for 758,005,183. Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tiger. Going back to the agenda, uh, now we come to Linda's financial update.
Okay, so, um, you have this on your tablets and I sent the first part of it just looking at the tax trends, sixty-day and, um, tax by, by source, together with the conveyance fees. And this was just an update, just to show that it's trending well. Year-to-date, we're pretty much where, where we should be. I know at the beginning of the year, uh, we were, we weren't sure with, um, with COVID and the tax deferral, where we would be and if there were going to be some potential cash flow issues. But so far, it's looking like that's not the case. And so I presented that for you, just so that you could compare this year and last year. The one thing of note is just looking at the different revenues by sources. We do see a spike in online payments, uh, which is understandable, given what's going on in the community. And we saw a drop, a slight drop in the walk-ins and that's offset by people moving to online. This year is part of the drop, of the drop-ins. We did also partner with Bankwell and we had about two hundred, a little over 250,000 that was paid in cash directly to Bankwell as we were discouraging people walking into town hall, um, into the office. So at town hall, we just had the drop box outside. Those that wanted to pay cash, we directed them to Bankwell. We established a relationship with them and they collected up 250, uh, that money. We are seeing, as you've seen, if you walked around the community, um, a lot of transfer of ownership and that translates into conveyance fees. For us, every time property changes hands, conveyance fees are paid. A portion of that stays with the town, a portion of that is remitted to the state. The portion of that, that stays with the town, year-to-date, just for the first two months, we're at 524,000 compared to 330,000 for the same period last year and 200,000 year before. So it's almost double what we've seen historically. For this item, this year, we actually budgeted a million dollars. When we're going through the budget, not anticipating what's going to happen, we actually lowered the annual estimate for conveyance for two consecutive years. And this year, the budgeted amount is a million dollars, I believe, down from what we used to budget at 1.2, 1.3. So just looking at these numbers, in the first two months of the year, uh, we're at 52% of what we budgeted for the full year. So if, if this trend continues, um, I think this, um, this revenue stream is going to come in strong and will more than likely offset any other revenues that underperform as we saw last year. So that's just by way of update. Uh, we're still closing out the year. We're almost there. So far, our revenues from last year have exceeded expenses and by about 800,000 or so. But as you've heard from the Board of Education, they do have some additional requests for funding related to COVID. And so they will be coming to the Board of Finance next month to give us an update on that. And therefore, we will be increasing to the fund balance this year, but there will be, there is a request from the Board of Ed that's going to be presented to use some of those funds, um, to offset expenses, unbudgeted expenses related to COVID, which is what you want your rainy day fund to be for. And so we're well positioned to provide, um, that resource to the Board of Ed when time comes for them. For that. And that's all I have by way of update. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. I will provide a more comprehensive update receiving at the Board of Finance. They wanted to look at the debt picture and whatnot. I'll be providing that tonight. So you're welcome to tune in at that meeting to, to hear additional financial updates. But that's all I have for now.
Kathleen?
Linda, thank you for this. It's very helpful. Just a question on the walk-ins versus the online. Is it your goal to try to see, encourage folks to do more in terms of online? Tax payments, excuse me, online versus walk-in?
Yes, and I think Kevin's been pushing for this, not just for tax payments, but just overall. As much as you can push online and automate and reduce these walk-ins, that is the goal. And this year, um, you know, the pandemic kind of helped us that way, but we will be doing additional push towards online.
Okay, thank you.
Just to Kathleen, writing.
Yeah, hey, thanks, thanks, Linda. Um, with respect to the B O E additional ask, which I guess will come next week. Is it our understanding that three quarters of that will be reimbursable because it's COVID-19 related?
At this point, yes, that's what we're anticipating. Um, and then the portion that's not anticipated through FEMA, uh, we can apply through the CARES grant that comes to the state. So we could get close to a hundred percent. But, but it all depends on, on what they're spending it on. Some things are reimbursable, some things are not. I know for some of the Board of Ed expenses, it's, it's personnel, um, additional, um, staff on the school buses, um, additional class, uh, teachers, not teachers, uh, parent educators in the classrooms, some of those costs may not be reimbursable. And so all what's reimbursable, we do anticipate getting 75% through FEMA, 75% through, uh, through the state.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's good to hear. I, I mean, I guess my initial reaction is that all, all of those monies are being spent because of COVID. That means not, we're not just adding people on school buses for the heck of it. It's because, there's need, a safety need.
Correct. No, and Tiger and Bill have been working with, um, Bill, Bill, Bill Osman is our coordinator for FEMA reimbursements. They actually audit, um, all of these. So like, we've done one submission already through FEMA and so after submission, you know, they'll take a couple of days to review it. Uh, but we see we've had two or three follow-up calls, uh, where they're actually looking at the specific items we've submitted. What is this for? Can you provide additional backup for this? Um, and so, yeah, so that, that prevents that, that padding, just because there's money out there, let's just spend and hope to get reimbursed. And so there, there are a couple of safeguards for that not to happen, including beginning here in town hall, before we even submit those, we vet them before submitting them to FEMA and then they'll do, they do some additional getting as well on their end.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any for the questions? That brings us to, next item on the agenda is tax overpayments. There's a bunch of car, car tax overpayments. Unless there's any questions, I approve the refunds of tax overpayments as displayed on our tablets.
Second here.
Further discussion? Kathleen, we, this is kind of routine. We give the money back when.
I understand. We did this last month too, so.
Okay.
We love to give money back.
I guess so.
Contracts, there's a bunch of DPW contracts on our net tablets under $10,000. Any questions? We don't actually vote on this, do we, Tom? That brings us to, uh,
Just review only.
What's that? Review only?
Review only, yeah.
That brings us to the last item on the agenda. But before, before that, we're going to transition next Monday. Tucker Murphy's going to join us next Monday. And so this, I guess will be Tom's last Board of Selectmen meeting, but he's going to stand with us through September and October to transition with Tucker. But I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank Tom for many years of support for the Board of Selectmen. And he's not going any very, going away very quickly and we hope to have a little bit of a send-off for Tom. But anyway, thank you, Tom, for all your dedication to the Board of Selectmen among all the town bodies.
Thank you. It was a great run.
Indeed. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Um, you're the best.
With that, I renamed, before we called this, what do we call it? Town updates? This, this was added.
Comments.
And, um, in looking at what other towns do, um, it's appropriate that not only I make comments, um, or give updates, but that, uh, Nick and Kathleen have the opportunity to make comments at, at Selectmen meeting. So, um, I would mention a few things and then turn it to Nick and Kit, Nick and Kathleen.
Going to get away with that for maybe just one more meeting and I won't, let's get away with it.
I would just mention that we have one more case of COVID college student away at school. These college kids are being tested at school and it's kind of frustrating to try to reach them to make sure that they are not in the game. And we haven't reached this particular student yet and but that's good news. I keep on saying our numbers are scarily good and, um, thank goodness, I feel like we're in a bubble, although the but, but I, you may have noticed the decision on football, high school football, kind of surprisingly reversed last week and, um, I'm, I'm personally disappointed. And I hope that maybe there's opportunity for this, this decision to be revisited, revisited by the governor. And, um, so I've been working with the library to try to get their parking plan, um, on schedule so we can bring the, uh, library proposal back to the Board of Finance and the Town Council in October. And, um, working on the, uh, implementation of the combined heat and power project at Saks and solar projects with the schools. Um, and, um, I think I mentioned before, we had a very good, very successful RFP and solar. So that, uh, that kind of is what I want to mention. And Nick and Kathleen, would you like to make any comments? I'd be happy to answer questions also. Yeah.
Go ahead, Nick. Go.
You go, go ahead.
Okay, just two quick things. Um, I actually did have a follow-up on, uh, the agenda discussion item from our last meeting, uh, from a constituent, just, um, commenting, and I think we probably all heard this, was Stanford was, is tasting their wastewater for COVID and they saw a spike. We, I think the call came out from Mayor Martin, um, Friday. And the question came, did, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, any consideration? And I know, I think we only had maybe a third of our, uh, population actually, uh, on our sewer, but I think it was a gym that talked about it at our last meeting that said, you know, we're going to, uh, to take, check it out and see if whether or not there was any value in doing so for New Canaan. Just didn't know if there's any follow-up there.
Jim did follow, Jim did follow up with the DEP. He's waiting for, uh, some answers back from them. We are noticing that Yale's doing a test, uh, a study with, uh, certain municipalities in the state, uh, but he's waiting for a little bit more guidance from, uh, from the DEP.
Yeah, Tiger, I seem to recall that it was a pretty expensive proposition, wasn't it? To, to, to install the system to, to actively monitor the, um, sewage for, for COVID. I, I seem, I seem to recall that we were talking about six-figure, a six-figure spend, but I, maybe I'm wrong.
He was, well, it was a thousand dollars a test, uh, per week and, uh,
Maybe, okay.
Need to test weekly. So, uh, and then that, that only gives you, and then it also depends upon where do you want to test? Where do you want to draw from? Do you want to draw from? We have three pump stations that brings the sewage into, into the station itself. Do you, you, you test at the station or do you test elsewhere? And one of our problems, as Kevin mentioned previously, is that, um, a portion of our flow comes from the Merritt Parkway. So the service stations on the Merritt.
I'm a little skeptical myself of the value of doing that testing and I think testing of individuals is much more important. The fact that we've tested 4,000 residents in the past sixty, eighty, ninety days. And the fact also that we don't have people complaining that they're ill. So, um, I, I, to me, that's kind of a very rough kind of, uh, test and wouldn't be that, that helpful. But certainly, you know, I, there's an, there was an article in the, I read this morning about the, uh, fact that, um, fecal testing may be more effective, especially with babies and stuff than, uh, than the, uh, so there's, there's kind of like, it's kind of like, uh, a lot of thought being given to how you keep, keep on top of this, but to me, the, uh, the wastewater is, is a very, very rough kind of test and doesn't tell you that much.
Okay, second item, uh, just a quick one. Um, had the pleasure of going on a field trip with John Howe and Tiger Man on our athletic fields, both at the parks and, uh, at the school athletic fields. We're going to follow up with reported our next meeting, um, but, um, spending some time just talking to a number of different people. I have to want to thank, uh, Jeff, both John and Tiger, uh, for doing this, along with Robin Bates-Mason and, uh, Tom Butterworth from the, uh, Town Council, as well as Tucker Murphy, who joined us, who was one of the, was this, was the chair of the pesticide usage, um, subcommittee, uh, twelve years ago. So, uh, she came for a full circle. More to say in, in two weeks.
Yeah, so as, as I mentioned to, in discussing this with Kathleen, I think it's entirely appropriate, we revisit this topic. It's one that I, I know very little about. And, um, and I think the, uh, the fact that we now have turf fields has changed things. And I, I also don't quite know what the role that the Fields Committee should play in this versus, uh, versus, uh, the Parks Department versus Town Council. So we'll, we'll further analyze this. I know Tiger and John Howe have their own views, um, on this topic, but, so we will bring this back when we, we kind of investigate some of those other points of contact as to who has responsibility for this policy.
I'm also looping in as to join the conversation, uh, if it's appropriate, Mike Benevento from the New Canaan Athletic, uh, Commission. Or Fields Commission, whatever the, the correct acronym is.
Foundation.
Foundation.
Thank you, foundation.
Nick?
Nothing on my end.
All right. With that, we will meet again in two weeks and, uh, I wish everyone a great week. Thank you all.
Thank you.